People logged in tonight.
Yeah, all right.
All right, so we're going to start tonight's workshop Coastal Waters Commission. I apologize that we're up here and you're down there. That's not generally at all how we do workshops. But in order to capture the audio in a quality manner, so that people who aren't here, who can look at recordings later, can actually follow and hear, our sound technician is requesting that we use these microphones and the podium for the workshops until we get a device that we can move that audio capacity down to a table. So this is not a formal council meeting, so I apologize again for the formal setting of us seven up here, but we want to have a conversation about the amendments to the Coastal Waters ordinance, and we really want to have it as a conversation. Again, just to capture audio, if everybody could just try and use the microphone. It's in good shape where it is. You don't need to adjust it. It picks up 360 degrees, and that way we can capture all of that audio. So Mark, I'd like to just introduce you as the Chair of the Coastal Water Commission. If you could just kind of kick us off, and then we can start a conversation here.
Good evening. Mark Morris, the Chair of Coastal Waters. So what did you, how, what kind of historic, do you, how far back do you want me to go? So you, I know we've got some new folks here.
Maybe just introduce the context of the changes and sort of your last several meetings that have brought us to this workshop, not, not going back years.
Okay. So the, so basically, now Charlie, if I make some mistakes, you can hop up here, please. So basically Coastal Waters was asked to tackle the questions of moorings outside the Harris Seakit. We had several months of meetings. We, we looked at what other municipalities offered in relation to what Freeport offered, what their rates were, what services they offered. Kind of came up with this, the solution that we felt like, I'm speaking for everybody in the Coastal Waters, we felt like if we lowered the rate to $50 for moorings inside and outside the Harris Seakit, and then raised the per foot fee for vessels inside the Harris Seakit, that would, that would level the playing field, and so that everybody was paying something. Part of, part of our basis for that was, we looked at, we looked at a search from Cape Elizabeth through Harpswell, and no municipality has an area where there was free moorings, and $50 was the cheapest. So based upon that, that's what we, that's what we, that's what we've done. Like I said, we took public comment over the course of months, and, and there was some opposition to it. We reiterated that this is not a tax, it's a fee. If you don't have a boat, you don't pay. Kind of like if you go to the landfill, you don't use the landfill, you don't pay. So that's kind of where we're at with this. We finally, we, that was kind of where we sat with the rate, and we passed it back to you folks for consideration. That was our recommendation.
I noticed there's, in addition to the discussion of the fees, there's a number of other edits in the ordinance, some clarifications. Is there anything to add there, or is that sort of already?
Well, we just separated, we just separated moorings inside at the Harris Seakit and moorings outside the Harris Seakit. To just be clear, just for some clarification within the ordinances, inside the, inside the Harris Seakit, you have, you have to have a servicing of your moorings. Outside the Harris Seakit, you don't. So it's just basically some, some, some housekeeping there. I can have Charlie come up. He was much more familiar with the specifics, if you want to get into nuts and bolts, but that's basically the, the, that's basically the gist of it.
Yeah, maybe just a little bit for the general public, a little bit of description about what that servicing process looks like.
All right, so the document that you guys have, and the document, I believe, is right here, is very similar to the document that was approved by Coastal Waters probably two or three months ago now. There's a few tweaks based on the public comment that we took, I guess it was several weeks ago now, maybe five weeks ago. So I kind of took, re-listened to the public comment, made a few tweaks, and to me, it seemed the most confusion and concern that I was hearing were, folks didn't really necessarily understand which sections applied to inside the Harris Seakit and which sections applied to outside. So to kind of rectify that, I placed in Article Five, which is on page seven, the, the kind of, it lays out what's, what specifies for moorings outside of the harbor, and then when you go down, there's some specific verbiage in there that, that is dedicated to sections inside of the harbor. Again, at the public comment, which, you know, after I reread it, I could see where a lot of folks were confused, that there were a few sections that they thought applied to their mooring outside of the Harris Seakit, but when in fact it didn't, it was just kind of the way Article Five was laid out. So I kind of tried to rearrange that a little bit, so it was a little more clear. Let's see. There was also other concerns that folks had with rental moorings with Airbnb properties, or if they, for whatever reason, didn't have a boat on their mooring for, you know, multiple seasons at a time. They didn't obviously want to see their mooring have to be forfeited, which wasn't the intent. So I just kind of tried to sneak in on, or not sneak in, but add in, let's see, it was Article Five. I just simply put if available. So if you don't have a boat for that season, you would just note that on your application, and that's how that would be handled. We're not mandating that you have to have a boat every season on your mooring out there. And let's see, our appeals timeline, that was a big issue at the, at the public comment. Folks, which wasn't a change, this is something that's been in the, the ordinance for, since I've been here, and I'm not sure when it was first put in there, but it was, it was, it was five days, which folks thought that that was a bit too short. So that was changed to 30 days. And obviously, we had a number of comments that were opposed for the $50 fee, which, you know, was the bulk of, of questions and concerns. But really, the, the wording is just rearranged with a few slight tweaks added in. I added a couple definitions in there for clarity, in the definition sections, which are in red.
Can you just provide a little bit of clarity on what the servicing, because that's a distinction between inside and outside?
Yeah, so.
What does that entail for your time and effort?
Are you talking about inspections, or what?
Servicing the moorings and then inspection.
Yeah, so inside the harbor, folks are required to have bi-annual inspections. Every two years, you have to get your mooring inspected. This is mainly because if something were to, if we were to have a mishap in the river due to faulty gear, it's not just going to affect your boat, but chances are, it's going to ping pong all the way down the anchorage and affect much more, have much more damage. So it's on, it's a burden of the applicant to get a, their mooring inspected every two years. We're not mandating that outside of the harbor. There is on the registration form, an inspection section, that the applicant is just, is just required to list what gear they have, when it was last serviced. There's a date that they can provide, but we are not mandating inspections outside of the harbor, which was, again, some concern at the public hearing as well. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. Part of the workshop format is for councilors to ask questions. So before we start with general questions from the public, I want to, while Charlie's at the podium and Mark's here, does, does anybody on the council have questions about the proposed changes to the ordinance and/or the proposed fee schedule? Because it is a conversation. Darryl?
The question I had was the same back along, is that my comments I have, that people own property, show property, they have a mooring out there, feel that they are paying, you know, extra money for the, the land, which I can understand, but I can also see your side of the story where, okay, you have a boat. So I'm struggling at this point. I'm leaning towards, you know, you know, if you own the property, I'm not sure if you, you need to be charged. So that's, that is one area that, that I'd like to, you know, got to figure out down the road, and I'm not sure this addresses that at this point. But other than that, the other question I had Charlie, and some of the concerns that were brought up, is like, if people come to Winslow Park, am I understanding they're putting moorings out in the area off Winslow Park or whatever? Do we need to be more distinct and identify those areas and, and control some of those accesses? Because I, I view that if someone comes down, they certainly should be charged some sort of fee to come down, particularly if they are, you know, from another community and using Winslow Park as a base and using that area there, there ought to be some sort of fee, and you ought to be able to have the information. You need to do your job, so.
Yeah, so I, I did look into, kind of looking at the idea of separating multiple zones. You know, one would be the end of Winslow Park. I tried to find other ordinances in the, in the state that kind of separated zones like that. You know, for Yarmouth, for example, you have Madeline Point, which is a designated anchorage, and you also have the Royal River. You know, I'm just using Yarmouth, for example. Their ordinance doesn't specify specific, they, they have a waitlist for those areas, but there aren't specific standards. The standard's the same no matter where your mooring is, anywhere in Yarmouth. So I don't, I personally don't, I definitely think the standards inside the harbor should differ from outside, but at this point, I'm not, I'm not really for creating multiple zones and, in my opinion, kind of complicating things more than they need to be. But, you know, one of the biggest things is just simply have a numbering system, because one thing that I have an issue with, if, if someone makes a complaint that something's dropped somewhere, and they say, oh, it's, it's out front right here, I go out there and there's 20 blank balls. I have no idea which one's been dropped right there, and, you know, it's very hard to distinguish what from what, if you will.
So I quickly learned, when this was first kicked back to us, Coastal Waters, about, about a year ago, I quickly learned that my phone number is posted on the town website, because I got a bunch of phone calls about this issue. And some of them were from folks who, who, who didn't have, who didn't, who lived inside the harbor, right, inside the Harris Seakit, but didn't use the town dock. Well, if they're not going to pay, why do I have to pay? Right? And then there was other people who said, I don't use any of the town services, why don't I get to? So this, this, this question has kind of spooled out a little bit bigger. I think that's kind of why we went back to, if everybody pays, we don't have to, we don't have to worry about this. Because I don't think, I speak for the Coastal Waters, I don't think we want to get into this whole position now that we exempt some folks, and, and then now we, we're getting other people who come up here and say, well, why don't I, you know, I, I pay taxes too, and why, just because I'm inside the river, I don't have to pay? So, you know, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a bigger piece of that too. I respect their, their opinion, but there's a bigger piece of that, that we did, that we did have that conversation as well. I want to make sure that was clear.
Can you just clarify the, the fees? It's $50 for any mooring outside the river regardless of size of boat, size of mooring, and no changes to the fees inside the river? Is that what we're proposing?
Yeah, so 50, 50 bucks across the board, and they don't have to, they don't have to mess with their moorings. That's, that's, that's on them. So that was one of the concerns we had early on. We, we addressed that. We didn't have the issue with inside the river, as Charlie proved, as he mentioned. So we said, okay, you're responsible for your mooring, and we'll, and you'll just have to give that first time information to Charlie about the mooring, and that's it.
No changes inside the river? Fee structure stays the same?
I didn't hear that.
The fee structure inside the river stays the same, so no changes to that?
No, so the fee structure's going to go up a little bit inside the river, the per foot fee, and that's just to make up the difference, so that at the end of the day, what they were paying before at the higher rate, so initially, they were 96?
For a resident rate.
For a resident rate, inside the river is 96, and then the per foot fee. So we dropped it down to $50 inside and outside. We're going to raise the per foot a little bit, so that it's not, it's, we're not going to raise the rates, it, you know, maybe a dollar here or there, but it's going to stay our, say the same, just so we're not losing revenue, and that's, that was our, that was our purpose of this.
Thanks. Darryl?
I'd like to go under Section Five, Number Two, the grandfathering, and how are we applying the grandfathering? I've had a couple people that, as an example, are down off the end of Wolf's Neck, off the old Stone Dock, that's been there. The one gentleman, Kenny Mann, he's been there probably since he was a kid, so he's getting up there and aging, he's older than I am, and so I, you know, I'm just wondering how that would apply to people like that, and, and how this, would they have the fee paid to them? And so if you could explain that, Charlie, that would be.
Yeah, so if, if, the intent for that, for the grandfathered section, is you're not going to have to, you won't lose your mooring. Everything that's out there right now would essentially be grandfathered. There would be the fee that the commission or would like to adopt, that would be on that mooring, starting whenever this gets a vote, or however that would work. So it wouldn't, wouldn't exempt them from that fee, but it would, it just, it allows the moorings that are currently out there to remain out there, if that makes sense. This was a process that actually Brunswick went through in 2006, I believe, where they, I kind of reached out to them a little bit and saw how that, that went with them, and that was similar to the verbiage they had, not quite the same, but, and they didn't, they didn't have any issues come up with, with how that was. 2006 or '07 is when they kind of did this same thing.
Chip?
Yep. One, does this limit the number of moorings people can have out in front of their houses?
It doesn't limit it. We, we did put numbers, which was no individual entity can have more than 15 moorings. We thought 15 was pretty, that's what we have inside of the harbor for our marinas. I mean, essentially, if you have that many, you're, you're probably renting them out and whatnot.
It does, but it's so high.
As long as there's sufficient room out in front of your property, and, you know, you, you, you have a different application for each mooring, I don't have any issue with it.
That's fine. The other question is, what is the problem that this is solving?
What's that?
What is the problem?
Yeah, so the.
This is solving?
So on my end, I first brought this up to the commission. I know it's been brought up, as it was mentioned in the public hearing, four or five times in the last 25 years. Since I've been here, I mean, I've fielded calls outside of the harbor from, you name it, folks putting their own boat on a wrong mooring because nothing's labeled, folks contacting me and saying LPA, which is an aquaculture lease, was set too close to their mooring, but when nothing's on file, it's tough to know, you know, where it's going to be interfering and where it's not going to be interfering. And like I said, just having a baseline, so where things are actually numbered, so you can see where things are being added, and not just kind of a free-for-all, because right now, it's a one-time, or it's, it's kind of loosely enforced, because it's, again, it's hard to tell what's placed out there, but it's a one-time application fee, where there's no follow-up. You know, so if folks get a new boat, change their location a little bit, then there's no, there's no follow-up with that. We've had folks that have complained to me where, you know, wooden spars are left on the moorings all year round, so when they're cruising through an area, they'll, you know, they'll hit a, you know, four by four by six wooden spar with their boat, when, you know, there's no need for that, when those are just being left out all year round. So it's just, I mean, there's, there's no secret why, I mean, 90% of municipalities in the state do it this way. You have a couple way down east that are a little, little loose with stuff, but, I mean, every municipality in Casco Bay at least has a numbering system and basic guidelines of what, of what's required for an annual, you know, registration.
So it's to know what's outside there, essentially?
What's that?
To administratively know what is.
Right.
Out there, so you can find it quickly when people call you.
Right.
Okay.
Trina?
I appreciate the effort to be inclusive with the language, and I'm curious if you could kind of explain the use of domestic partners more in depth? How are we defining that? That wasn't in the definitions, so can you?
Yeah, you're right. That's a good point. I could actually add that. That was actually brought up at our public comment last, last, whenever, several weeks ago now, and before it had spouse in there, and there were a couple individuals that had an issue with it. Again, we can put it back to spouse. It's, it's kind of, it was my attempt to, to, to work with folks, if you will. So I could add that in the definitions.
Right. Are we looking at it, like, the legal definition of domestic partners, or is it two people living under the same household? I think that, that clarity could be helpful in the future.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I appreciate, you know, making it more broad than spouse.
Yeah, again, I mean, these, the, the minor changes that I did add would need to obviously go back to Coastal Waters for, you know, their approval, because they, they saw this, I think I sent this out three weeks ago after I worked on it, so they've, they've had some time to digest it, but, you know, like that edit that was in there, if they wish to keep that in there, would need an official vote and, yep.
Question? Dan?
The, the first number under Article Five talks about mooring assignments within the anchorage shall be granted to riparian landowners. So if you're not a riparian landowner, does that mean you can't get a mooring in Freeport anymore?
Yeah, so there is some verbiage, and this is also something that I would like to kind of open the dialogue about, because, so Freeport would be unique if, if we allowed, you know, let's say you lived up on the Hunter Road and you wanted to put a mooring out in front of your house, if you're a riparian owner. That isn't a common practice in other towns. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, or I think if they have the access, if, if someone said, hey, I want to put a mooring out in front of your property, can I park in your driveway? You know, I have no issue with that. I think that we did add some language that said all other mooring assignments, or all, all other mooring requests shall be approved by the harbor master. So if someone did come and they could prove, you know, whether it was written permission from a, a landowner allowing them to park, or whatever the case may be, then.
So if, you're allowed to grant that for non-shore owners if there's a reason to do so?
Right.
Got it. And sort of related, could somebody come in and say, I'm going to plant six moorings, and I have access, you know, and I'm going to prove it to you, and then I'm just going to rent them out as a business?
Technically, they could. They would have to pay the, the separate fee for that, you know, which we have, we have that going on right now. So they would, they wouldn't be charged the $50 fee if they're using that to make a profit. They would be charged that separate fee. But how this is written, then it'll be allowed.
Thanks.
Roughly, how many moorings are we talking outside the harborage?
So when I did a count, this has been two years ago now, I think it was about 107. We probably have 20 more now, so 130, call it, right around that.
And do you think you're going to see the increase in requests?
The last, the last three years, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, every, every waitlist in Casco Bay, for whatever reason, after, you know, 2020, has just gone up exponentially. You know, ours went from a three to five year wait for a resident to closer to eight now. Royal River has a wait, I mean, if you get on the waitlist for the Royal River right now, you might get one by the time you're 90, but it's, it's pretty significant, so.
Other questions? Eric?
First of all, we've talked a little bit about the fee schedule, and, and in terms of the ordinance, it says the fees will be set by the town council, but there is no fee schedule in front of us at the moment. So when we're talking about what this says, we're not talking about approving the fee schedule, and I'm, but I'm assuming that's going to come to us at the same time. If we were going to enact this, we would need to see the, all of that fee schedule here. So, so part of the conversation, and this goes back to something that, that Councilor Fornier said, you know, whether or not there's a registration requirement is separate from what the fee schedule is.
Correct.
And so it is possible that we could require registration without any particular fee associated with it. If, if the solution that this is trying to form is about the administration and understanding of what's where, it isn't reliant on what any particular fee is.
That's correct. The town does pay a $6 fee to our online database that we use per mooring. So obviously, I think that would, at the very least, be, need to be taken into consideration. But again, the, the fee was kind of more at the commission level. I didn't get too, too involved with the fees, other than provide surrounding town fees and any other.
There actually is an amendment to this with the fee schedule.
Okay.
Presented from the commission. And I thought that was a part of everybody's email information, so.
Okay.
Make sure we have that, for sure, but.
The.
Yeah, I mean, I got a chance to see it. I'd assumed everybody else did, but.
The, because there are, this is quite a bit different than, I mean, this, this most recent iteration is quite a bit different than the last one that I saw that came out of the commission, so there are quite a few changes. One of the things I wanted to look at was, so back in Article Five, and this was something we were just talking about, which is Section 1B, when it says all of their mooring requests must be approved by the harbor master, I think that really should be subject, are subject to the approval of the harbor master. It's not requiring that you must approve them. I know that that's different than shall be, which is for the riparian landowners up above, but the way that reads, it makes it sound like all requests must be approved, when I think what you're saying is that they're subject to, to approval. So back on the, on the grandfathering piece, which was then Item Two, as you said, it's, and I've, and I've heard this concern from some folks who've had moorings in a particular location for a long time that are sort of inherited. What would happen if that, say, this registration fee went unpaid for some period of time? Would that jeopardize the grandfathered location? Would that person or family be subject to losing that?
If they don't, if there's a fee that's adopted by town council and they fail to pay that fee, that's typically how it works, is they wouldn't, they would not be eligible for renewal the next year, which I guess we could specify that, but the answer would, would be if there is a fee that the commission and council decides to, which, the commission already decided the $50 fee, but whatever you guys choose to adopt, if they didn't pay that fee, then yeah, they wouldn't be renewing.
Okay.
Yep.
The, the end of, or almost the end of Article Five, it's Section Nine, where it says, someone who's been, whose mooring assignment's been terminated by the harbor master for noncompliance with the coastal water ordinance or any other reason. I'm assuming that would be some other violation of code or, or state law, or some other reason? Is, is there, can you just identify what are some of the other reasons that somebody might lose?
Yeah, I would say, which, that might be a great point. I could also add some stuff in there, but just under those standards, under, you know, like identification, if they go, if I talk to them through on three separate occasions and they just say, no, I don't want to put a number on my mooring, or something like that, or I, they've had a winner marker on their mooring the last, you know, four summers, that's, you know, a hazard of navigation, and they just kind of tell me to go my own way, then I think there should be, I'd like to stand on for that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. So again, I apologize for the dynamic here. It's really supposed to be a workshop and a conversation, so we have a number of people in the room, and we, I see we have a number of people on Zoom, so would like to just open it up, and please be mindful that we have a handful, a good handful of people here, so try and be crisp with your comments, and let's hear from you. Please step up to the microphone so we can capture it on audio.
Sorry for getting up slowly. Peter Thompson from Byer Mav. I lost a battle with a roll of shrink wrap this weekend. I'm a professional mariner. I think there are others that may also be in the room. We have a lot to offer to help Charlie. I mean, I have a Coast Guard license. have a Coast Guard license, had a boat off Flying Point for over 30 years, a wooden schooner. I'd like to challenge maybe some of the comments from Mark, who sees that there's a lack of equivalency between in the harbor and areas outside. Think back to the 2017 Halloween Storm, where we're unprotected, the place to be was the Freeport Harbor. Took a beating, you know? Hurricane mooring, mooring didn't move, broke big oak bits on the boat, you know, some damage, had to fix it. But that's expected, and when you're in an unprotected area. So I don't think there's an equivalency between in the harbor and out the harbor. Inside the harbor, you got Charlie, other eyes looking around for vandalism problems. I had to put $1,000 of video cameras on the boat about, around that time, with Mrs. Chipman's son, Matthew, was causing problems and, you know, damaging the vessel. When I brought the videos to the police department, they said, well, we can't really do much with that. But that's okay, because individuals saw that he was caught and didn't come back. So it's not equivalent outside the mooring. We have no access to services, no fuel, no water, no sewage disposal. We got transport for that. We have no public access. And we pay a lot more in taxes. And I think Daniel, at the last meeting, your comment was something to the effect, you have no interest to have a fee, it's peanuts, you know? It's targeted, you know, to be without a fee. Those are the comments on the September 3 hearing. Again, I think that the notion that Charlie's saying is, is a good notion, unlimited mooring locations for residents. I kind of disagree with the notion that free commercial moorings, I think you go, go back to the state statute, it's addressed there. It basically says, moorings are not for commercial use unless pre-approved by the harbor master, an agreement when the mooring is requested. So you could certainly do that. In respect to that, I think your comments, I think it was Daniel about the area, or maybe it was Matthew, or I think it was Daniel, outside of the, not the recompense, but the campground next to the harbor, maybe needs to be a special anchorage. I, I agree with you on that, because it has special circumstances. I don't think it's good to cast the whole area as one anchorage. One, and I'll pass some comments, specific comments, to Charlie for his use. Here to help, here to communicate. You know, this whole question that you had, Joanna, about the domestic partners, I think it's simple. It's either registered or unregistered in the state of Maine. It should be spouse or domestic partners. That's fine. I think Charlie's language was fine. But my wife would not want to be called my domestic partner. I can guarantee you that. And, and the, and the notion, I think the whole, if you look at the statute, and I, I'm not going to go through the article, the, the, the section, but the purpose of the harbor master and the statute was to protect navigational channels from being encumbered by moorings. Now, where we hail from, over Lower Flying Point, we have one boat and every 23 to 30 acres. We are very undense in our population. It's going to take 100 years before we need someone to designate where moorings have to be out there, frankly. But if you set up the ordinance in a way that's sort of a more forward-thinking, more designed to be objective-oriented, and you said, let's have the harbor master, like it says in the statute, from the town, designate the navigational channels on a chart, then the ordinance becomes very simple. For the riparian residents, they cannot place a mooring within those navigational channels. It's a self-regulating ordinance at that point. It's not prescriptive. It's, you know, kind of a forward-thinking ordinance. So I think it'd be very useful to have, or to work with the harbor master and the Coastal Waters Commission, those who've been on the water out here for a long time, and say, what specific little areas are navigational channels that should be protected? I think it's a very small list. But I think that would be a useful thing to do, and have it on a chart, available for the residents to understand, not in someone's head. So there's a lot of other minor comments I have on the, on the language in the ordinance. I'll just pass those off in red line strikeout. But I think those are the, the big picture items that I would want to simply have the town council consider.
Yeah, go ahead, Darrell.
A question I would have, how do we address your mooring to be identified, so if there is a problem?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think that is important. I, I think we need a mechanism to do that. And I'm not sure we need to be charged $50 for it, but there is probably some sort of administrative fee that would be required.
I, I absolutely agree, Darrell.
So...
And, and it's, what's important to me is, I go out and check other people's moorings before, during storms. I look at their chafing gear. The reasons why all the moorings failed over in Falmouth 10, 15 years ago is people kept their anchors, their bow anchors and the rollers, right, and they caught up underneath their panels and cut them. Those types of things are just good seamanship, you know? I believe, and I've written in my comments, that the moorings should all have the owner's name, phone number, primary contact phone number on the mooring. Doesn't do me any good to have a number on it. Charlie's out Saturday afternoon or Sunday afternoon doing something, enjoying something, and I see someone whose boat has a problem, because I'm a mariner, and mariners take care of mariners, that's what you're supposed to do. That's the creed you sign up for. I want to have a number. I want to be able to go by the mooring, so, there's the guy's phone number, call him up. In terms of registration, I think it's, what's most important is to have knowledge for Charlie, what's on the bottom. Is it a mushroom? Is it a granite block? How much bottom chain? How much top chain? When was it put in? I, I, I'm lucky, I've got a bow spread on our schooner. I pick up my mooring every year. I know exactly the condition of the top five feet of chain, spring and fall, when I change the mooring balls. And get about five years, and you should be thinking about replacing some of those links. But in terms of, of, you know, actual registration, here's an idea I'll throw at you. The town, I believe, uses a GIS consultant to do all of its tax work and stuff like that. And what they do is serve back to the public, it was called a KMZ file. So I go to the town website, click on a KMZ file, download it, click on it, boom, there's all the tax maps in Freeport on Google Earth. So you can load the NOAA charts on Google Earth, and it'd be very easy to simply, and I'll do this for Charlie, I'll give him an example. Click on your, of, of Google Earth, oh, there's my boat, boom, click right there, make a KMZ file of your mooring location. Write your name, phone number, coordinates in the file header on the KMZ, email it to Charlie. He clicks on it, and instantaneously, he's got a map of the moorings. It doesn't have to go through your GIS consultant, who has to produce a map. It can be real-time data for Charlie. We all use Google Maps, Google Earth. I could write the instructions on how to do that. It takes about less than a minute. So there's other ways. And I think really the mooring is the key thing. The boat isn't as important, it's the mooring. How old is it? How is it constructed? Location? Who's the owner? How do you get a hold of them when there's a problem, when Charlie's not available? I think those are the things that make, make good sense for public safety and, you know, navigate, you know, in helping out navigational disasters and hazards. Sorry to run so long. Thank you.
And within the KMZ file, you can put all that information, the phone number, the, I know this because I work with KMZ files, but...
Oh, yeah, it's easy.
It's very easy.
It takes, it takes two seconds.
And then you know exactly where it is. And you can open up each KMZ, you can open, you know, you put it under one file, you can open it all up as one file, or each individual person.
Or as a group.
Yep.
So if someone changes their location, they send Charlie a new KMZ file, boom, he deletes the old one. But I really think it's important, as a mariner, to know your neighbors and to, when there's a problem, be there to help, and know who to contact and when. And, and if you also have, like, the phone, the contact number on mooring, then Department of Marine Resources has access to the information as well, without chasing him down.
Anyone else?
No. Hello, my name's Joyce Bayou. I'm from Flying Point area. First off, I think registration is a must. Charlie needs to know where things are and who owns what that's out there. I'm not sure I want my phone number on the mooring ball, but that could be a discussion we had later. I do support the idea of making a separate area around the Winslow Park, because I think there are campers and other people that are using that area, and people that are non-riparian owners that live in Freeport, might be able to actually have a small boat out there and enjoy the water as much as we do. I also think that we need to start looking at, but not hold this passage of this amendment up, at an area for transient moorings. There is a small commercial niche there that's starting to grow in Freeport, and if you look at people like the Dolphin, it has grown tremendously. But it brings people into South Freeport, they use the South Freeport store, they use brewers to help do repairs, they pull, have a mooring out there, outside of the river anchorage area, they use their dinghy to go back and forth, the town can charge a dinghy fee. Most places do have a policy of that kind. Going into this actual amendment, Article Four, on page, yeah, page six. Much better, by the way, Charlie. You did listen to many things that we said. It says, Paragraph Three, there under Article Four, that the harbor master shall approve and control the placement of all moorings. To me, that says, if I'm a new owner, I have to go to the harbor master, say, I want, please give me permission, and where can I put it? Yeah, and if you look at your definitions for anchorage, all waters in Freeport are the anchorage above the high tide. So if that's how you want it, then first, you know, we need to know what's the approval process. Is there a form? Is it a phone call? How do I get this approval in order to put, what is my God-given right to put out there? Article Five, lower down on that, Paragraph One, I have a little problem with if I want more than one mooring. Again, I've got to ask Papa permission, instead of just being able to go and register it and say, I have a second mooring here. There are some people who like to motor and sail, for some reason. So they have the need for two moorings. So again, we're having to get permission for the second one. Again, I support the registration completely. I do have a question, though. We do have a lot, several people who have what this ordinance is calling a haul-out. So your ordinance says that we have to, all mooring assignments beyond the mean low water that are located within the anchorage area must submit a registration. Sometimes the further out ball on an out haul goes into, beyond the low watermark. So is that included in the need to register those? Therefore, it would be a second mooring. Page seven, Paragraph Nine, termination. I have a real big problem with that term. Any other reason, I think that needs to be defined. If I get a ticket for jaywalking, is that another reason? I don't jaywalk in Freeport, because there are crosswalks every 30 feet, but, so I think that any other reason per this ordinance, or, you know, there needs to be a little bit more verbiage, a little bit more meat to that, to just find what any other reason is. I do believe that there need to be some attachments added, and I'm going to list these off. They could be obviously combined into, multiple things could be combined onto one map, but there should be a map showing what are Freeport waters. We're constantly getting questions about, well, is, is the Goslings Freeport? No, the Goslings is not Freeport. So it would be nice to have one with all the islands clearly identified, also with the location of what are the navigational channels that Charlie is trying to protect, should be on there. And that helps when we're putting in a second mooring, or a new person comes along and wants to put in a mooring, that'll tell them that they can't put one in that area. As much as possible, the location of aquaculture leases, particularly the big ones. I know that's a constantly changing thing. Location of any areas that are restricted from having moorings. I don't know that we have any. And also a copy of the registration form. Fees. Always save that one for last. So there was a memo that was produced by the harbor master dated 9/27/23. Is that still current with your suggested mooring fees?
Yeah, the, the mooring, the suggested mooring fee is $50.
Yes, suggested. $50. Bringing the cost of the ones from in the harbor river anchorage area down from 96 to 50. But it also says, contrary to what was said here earlier, keeping the $2.25 foot charge the same for resident recreational moorings inside the Hersecut River Anchorage. Not increasing it, not keeping their fees about the same. It would keep their per foot charge the same and decrease the general admitted, admitting down from 96 to 50. I'm against any additional fees. I understand there's a $6 fee for the information to be inputted into the database system that the town uses. Personally, I don't understand that. There are several database systems that the town already owns. There's always Excel. There's people who have offered to volunteer their time in order to change the information over to a database system that we already have, that we wouldn't need to spend $6 per input. But I don't agree with anything higher than that, because we don't get any services for the money. We're not protected. We have no security from it. We have no dock. There's an all-tides dock. I don't have any special place where I can keep my dinghy, where it's nice and safe on said dock. So it's just a tax. It's a tax to people who happen to have riparian land. It's a tax, another tax on me, because my grandmother was smart enough to save money and buy that property in 1947. And I don't think that's right. Thank you. Questions? No questions?
Ed Bradley, Flying Point Road. I think Charlie did a good job of separating out registration all through the harbor, all through the anchorages, and that which applies in Hersecut River. So I, like Joyce, I support that, and I think having him have that information makes a lot of sense. The one comment I heard today that I didn't really understand before tonight was that non-riparian could have a mooring outside, anchored, in the anchorage, outside the harbor, as long as, I think as Charlie put it, there was some evidence of access from the landowner. I don't see that in here. I think that would be important, that, that be specifically provided, that a non-riparian could get out there, but he can't be somebody who showed up from Belfast, who's got three boats and wants a mooring, and he doesn't know how the hell, how he's going to get there, and he'll go across everybody's land to find out. My major comment goes to the fee, and I understand the equivalence arguments. I've heard them. It's part of the, the culture today, makes, make everything equal. But there's some things about this that seem to me aren't equal. First of all, it's not like we're starting anew in creating a, a registration system that shall apply equally to everyone. What you really do is changing a registration system to make it unequal for people who have had a zero fee until this time. There's a lot of good sense in what's... There's a lot of good sense in what's said about there are no services out on Flying Point Road. And if you want to look at the number of kayaks and dinghies and things that are destroyed in storms, because I don't have those services out there, but I need to get to the boats that are out, I'll show them to you. It's a risk you take, but it's, it's an expense you incur, that you don't incur in the harbor, and all the other services you get in the harbor, that you don't get out on the shore in a riparian area, don't create, and from my point of view, an argument that everybody's fee should be the same. It's quite different. And you're changing it, you're not just starting from scratch. What I think the council also should, ought to consider is the cost of the services that are provided inside or outside the harbor. So inside the harbor, and I, Charlie can correct me, and I have talked to him about this, so I think this is roughly right, he has a lot of work to do, all the time. It's very congested. There's a lot of people moving, and a lot of different kinds of boats moving, a lot of different size boats moving. Outside the harbor, it's important to know what's there, but it's not a daily concern to him in terms of his day-to-day work. So a lot of what we pay Charlie doesn't apply to the kinds of boats that are sitting in the areas outside the harbor. What is an expense, I guess, is the registration. And no one, no, whatever the town decides to do for registrations, up to the town. I, I wouldn't know. I heard some intelligent conversation about lesser cost systems for registration. I don't know anything about that. But if it's a $6 fee for every registration that Charlie's got to deal with out there, then the, the mooring owner ought to pay it. But to pay the differential, to make it equivalent, when the situations aren't equivalent, and it's, it's a change to that existing mooring owner's expense pattern, it seems to me is unfair. And the last distinction I'd like to talk about is a question about a fee or a tax. You know, and I, again, I'm not, I don't want, I didn't lawyer this when I was on the council, and I'm not going to lawyer it now, but I would suggest that before you adopt a fee that's an equivalence with a different set of services that go to support that fee, you ask your attorney whether or not what you're doing is taxing the people who aren't getting services but are being asked to pay the equivalent fee. My rough recollection from a law school classroom a long, long time ago, is that that, that is what defines a tax versus a fee. If there's no, if there's no service associated with it, it's just a revenue-producing matter to help support Charlie's employment, which, as I understand it, we don't need. I mean, none of this is being driven by a need for revenue for coastal waters. It's, it's based on a theory or a sense of an, of an equivalence, which in my experience and in, through the history of this town, doesn't exist. So it's the fee that bothers me. It seems to me to be an avenue towards, if you got equivalence, and then all of a sudden you decide that you want three harbor masters because you need them in a congested area, you're going to increase it inside the harbor. Well, then you're going to increase it out on, on Casco Bay, everywhere within our anchorage. And I guess the last thing I'd say is that we have small boats out in the anchorage. I mean, my mooring in my riparian area, and please, I, total transparency, I, I am a riparian owner, and I, I love the, I love it. It's why I'm here. But it's a 10-foot Dory. You know, it's a Cape Dory with a sail my wife sewed last, last winter in our basement. That's the kind of boat we have out there. I've got a bigger boat, but guess where it is? It's in the harbor, you know, and I've got a slip for another one. And so I'm perfectly prepared to pay for the expense of those boats that match up with those that get, that need the services. But when you've got them on the shore, in some of the places, there are going to be people, you think of it as only a $50 fee, but they've got three or four of these little boats that sit out in front of them. And all of a sudden, you've gone from nothing to $200 or $300 for them. So think about those things when you're thinking about the fees. If you really are going to charge an equivalent fee, and you're not going to provide equivalent service, then I, I think you'd be well-served to ask Amy, who are your lawyer, whether that is a tax or not. I don't, I think it is, but I might be wrong clearly. But if it is a tax, and somebody decides to do that, you may find yourself in another one of these maritime mires where people who think it's a tax challenge it.
Thank you.
Do you guys, do you guys want to hear from some coastal waters?
We'd love to.
This is, like, it's a workshop.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of, I know it is a workshop, so we're not going to.
So I don't know if you want to ask us questions, because, you know, we're getting a lot of input from public input, but I will go on, someone's talking about their maritime prowess. We've got a ex-coast guard inspector, I'm a commercial captain driving 150 passenger ferries, got a boat delivery captain. Your coastal water commission is full of very, 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 very knowledgeable people, very aware of everything that we're proposing. And I will say, what, I've researched this even when I was up in summers at Port Clyde. I went up, I drive a ferry from Port Clyde to Monhegan. And I actually talked to their harbor master. This is how obsessed I've become with this. And Port Clyde, if anyone's been there, is a small harbor that has exactly like Freeport. You've got a small little hurricane hole, really tight, really protected, and then you have the river that goes up to Thomistown. You go up around Mosquito Island, and they're all over the place. And I asked the harbor master, I said, do you have different fees for different, whatever? The guy looked at me like I was out of my mind. He's like, no. And I'm like, okay. So we do it differently. And I'm not saying that it's bad that we did it differently, but when this came back to us, when Counselor Brett, well, Ed sent it back to us, we looked at it, and we spent a lot of time on this. These are like, I was talking about the minutes, you're never going to get back. And we spent time after time researching this, comparing to different areas. We went well beyond Harpswell, Charlie, actually, because I internet searched that. And Freeport is a very unique spot that doesn't do this. And it's not that we're charging a fee and not getting anything, it's the fact that we went over this. Some of the public comments said, well, we don't have to have Charlie come out here if something goes wrong. Well, I think that's really bad policy, if something goes wrong, that requires our harbor master to go out and, and have an emergency, or a boat gets broken loose, to say, well, yeah, but they're outside the fee zone. So it is Freeport waters, but we're not going to go out there. This was the thing that we were running into. And this was the baseline fee that we came up with of this $50 that we're coming up with. I don't care if it's $20, I don't care if it's $10, but it should be that way for everybody, because what we did is we kept the surcharge in the river, which is substantial. So they're not equal. They're not even close to equal. The people, I have a boat in the river, 38 feet times what? What do I pay in addition to my fee of $96?
$2.25.
$2.25. Not even close to what they're paying, well, yeah, they're paying nothing, but even if they went to the 50. So we also have another important thing to say, and this is especially, I was on that side at one time, for some of you I've not met. You also have a job with the rest of the town. The harbor master costs the town money. Having access to the harbor master to respond costs the town money. And the people that are paying these inside fees, just because they don't have the luxury of having a home on the water, which maybe they can't afford, does not necessarily mean that, where was I going with this? I just lost my train of thought, it was a good one, was that when you're, when you have these, that's right. So when they're all paying this, you've got District One, District, I hate to always break it down to districts, but I always did this, D1, D3, D4 at large. We have a lot more people than just Flying Point that are paying into this system so that we can have an outstanding harbor master, who works really hard, by the way, and does a really nice job. And yeah, you might have a $6 admin fee that you said for mooring online, but that takes someone that has to enter it. And yes, you can get a volunteer, but we can go down that rabbit hole about, you know. My point is, you have a lot more people than just this group that has to pay into this system to make it work. And I don't think we have that option. This was, and I hate to be passionate about it, but I've spent months of this, and there's times that we have time with our family when we're asked to look at this. We put a lot of hard work into this. Okay, we didn't come to, I'm friends with Joyce, by the way. We're good friends. I don't like being on the opposite side. Okay, but that's how we came to this conclusion. If you want to ask any of us questions, we were not unanimous. I believe there was one dissenter. I do think in all fairness, it might have been, one of us voted against the fees. So it wasn't unanimous, but it was just about unanimous, after a lot of research and deliberation. So we did not come at this lightly. Okay, so I just wanted to say that. Sometimes I feel like the momentum can get changed, and I just look at it more of, it's a lot of hard work we've done over a lot of months, that I, I don't need to get stymied, you know, because of a $50 fee. I think there's a lot of good work done.
Scott, maybe you can help me out here. If I'm understanding this right, so the current fee is $96 in, in the harbor?
And plus the $2.25 per foot.
Okay. So your recommendation is to lower from the 96 to the 50 across the board?
Because I want everybody to be this, I, I am, I've always been interested in representing every mooring holder, in all fairness. Everybody should have a same basic fee, as long as you're in Freeport waters. We've had, we've had issues coming up about someone saying, well, I have, you know, riparian rights, and, well, riparian rights also doesn't apply to under the water. It's actually the mean, highest annual, the lowest, I think it's the lowest annual tide. And that really just applies with those little pulley things that you can do with your dinghies. But as far as the actual moorings, those are actually in, you know, Freeport waters, of which it's, it's, it's really, you may have a right by law, and some people do have deeded rights for a mooring, but it doesn't say that you have a deeded right not to pay for the fee. It's, the fee is going towards the harbor master and the cost for Freeport. And as far as services, too, my mooring is way up the river. I am talking way up the river. And I've got nothing up there. And I'm, I think I'm up to the point where you're one by one, all the way up, or two by two. I have to pay John Brewer for my dinghy, so it's about $1,000 bucks, or $800 bucks for my dinghy. I don't use the town dock. So my point is, you can really go down on the services question. You can really get, it's in Darryl, with your old fires, fire department, you know, we can really get into that, like, oh, I've never called the fire department. I don't think I should have to pay that part of my budget. And you're going to get everybody in the room, starting to line item which budget on your, on your, on your budget review process. So I don't like the fact that, that $50, you know, I get it, they've never had to pay it before, and, you know, we're proposing that, I get it. But I also think that we've really, really reviewed it hard, spent a lot of time, and I just think it's better policy. And I'm just surprised Freeport's been this way for so long. And there is a major problem, by the way, especially around Winslow. It's like the Wild West, they're dropping them everywhere now. Yeah, you can literally walk across them, and none of them are paying a fee, right? And none of them are registered. So, and if you don't have to pay a fee also, I'm not saying for these guys, but if you're not paying a fee, what's, ah, drop 15, 25, 30 rental moorings, why not? I'm not paying for it, so just drop them down on there. So I don't, I'm getting way off the point, but I just want to let you know that, that we've worked really hard on this, so. And I think also, if, if there is a discussion on waiving the fee, I think in all fairness, I think, I don't want to make it bigger, but maybe we should bring in the whole mooring community on just this whole fee issue. I mean, if that's, if it's going to come down to the fees, I think, I think every mooring holder should know what's being proposed. So if we're looking at having zones of where they could, maybe they want to try to get a mooring outside, and they don't want to pay a fee. I mean, it is getting expensive, so. Anyway, that's all. I don't want to talk and blubiate, so thanks, bye.
We have somebody on Zoom?
We do.
We're going to just go to somebody on Zoom here, just to pivot back and forth.
We've got Tucker on Zoom. I'll bring over.
Hey, thank you for taking some time to listen to me.
Be online and ready to talk.
Can you guys hear me? Everyone hear me? Hello?
There we go. We can hear you.
Great. Thank you very much for the time. So I just have a couple of questions. Like, one, if the fee's going to be 60 bucks, that's $1,500 for 20 years, can we just pay it upfront? You know, just cover it, no worries? Two, what's driving this? I keep hearing, like, the harbor master keeps speaking to things that are driving it, events, but there's, I haven't seen any hard data. What we do have hard data on is that there's a lot of need in the harbor. So I'm confused why we're spending time trying to tax the people who have moorings outside the harbor, when it sounds like the real problem is that there needs to be more access in the harbor. Like, why are we making it harder for people to have access to the water in Freeport? Freeport should have more access to more town people, like, let's make the harbor better for that, because it's a really great resource. Registration, why in January? Why can't, I can register my boat at any time, why can't I register my mooring at any time? I get it in the harbor, you kind of want to figure things out. Outside the harbor, like, I don't know, does it really matter? Because I don't think we've seen a lot of problems. I'd also, and then, you know, we've talked about the harbor master a lot and the services. Like, what are those services? Do we have a menu somewhere of, like, what we can rely on the harbor master to do, when those, when he's available to do those things? You know, for instance, does anyone police the waste coming off the aquaculture farms that washes up on our beaches? Like, who's dealing with that? And that's it. And I, I just, I, I just am concerned that we're doing this, you know, because everyone else is doing it, is what I keep hearing, and we're, we got to do it the same way as everyone else. And I think, just to the guy who last spoke, like, you talked about equivalency, we should have the same fee, then let's equalize the property taxes, you know? We're going to have equivalent fee. But if we're not going to do that, then I don't see why the people who aren't getting the services outside of the harbor should have to pay 50 or 60 bucks a year for someone to record their stuff in a database. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else got their hand?
One more, yeah. John Clark. Josh Clark, or sorry, Josh.
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can, Josh.
Hello. Okay, great. I'm Josh Clark, a resident of Sound Pigs whenever possible. And I just have three things I wanted to ask you guys to comment on if possible. First one is, is there an online way to register mooring now? Is there a way to do it online, or do you have to do it by paper?
It's a one-time paper application.
Okay.
Charlie says paper. I don't know if you could hear him, Josh.
It's, the first time's paper.
Yep, I did.
Every time after, it's online.
Yeah, on paper the first time and online after.
Is he talking about how the new process would work?
Yeah.
Or how it currently works?
Or, I guess how it would be proposed to work.
Yeah, so you would be contacted, you can either fill out a paper application, or you can do it online.
Okay. Thank you. This, my second one is, is there a process explained in the ordinance or elsewhere how the locations of moorings will be allowed? Like, the actual locations? So, you know, can I put, you know, what defines my riparian rights, I guess? And so can, can neighbors be putting, can there ever be a conflict with neighbors putting in, or even non-riparian owners putting in moorings in locations where, you know, other people think they have the right to do it? Is there a process for deciding, like, who has the rights to certain areas of water to put the mooring in?
Do you have a response for that, Charlie?
Yeah.
Could you step up to the mic?
So the way the statute reads, a mooring fronting your property, and that is actually a big problem right now. We do have moorings that are being placed fronting people's properties that don't belong to them. And then essentially, I get called, and I, they say, you know, where did these two moorings come from? Where did this mooring come from? It's awfully close to mine, and there's no database for me to figure out who that belongs to. Oftentimes, I go out, having to run the registration and play a game of phone tag for a week until I find the owner. But no. If that answers your question, if you have a follow-up question for me.
So, yeah, so I guess if, let's say, you know, two people have 100 feet of frontage, and they're neighbors, and is there just like a straight-up line that comes off of their border that's on land that extends virtually out into water? Is that how that works? And how far out does that go? Does it go 300 feet offshore? Like, what's the, what are the parameters for where a riparian owner has the rights to put a mooring?
Yeah, so there isn't a specific footage that is specified in state law. It's, it's, whenever practicable, a mooring holder, or a riparian landowner shall have a mooring fronting their property. Fronting is where, is where you kind of get into that gray area, what's exactly fronting. It's not laid out 300 feet, or from your, you know, I don't have those specific answers for you.
Okay, so does anybody on the council know if there is a process for defining that? Or, and if there isn't, is there a way to get that process into the ordinance?
Ed, you got a comment for that? Can you step up to the mic?
Again, with the 20-year, since I've had to deal with these issues disclaimer, this was my expertise. And, you know, if you think about the shoreline, if it's a straight shoreline, you know, then it's, the, the fronting of a riparian is the perpendicular lines on either side, and they extend out, I think it's 1,800 feet, or to the limits of low water, whichever is greater. So the problems come when the coastline is not straight, and it isn't in most, most of, most of Freeport, where you have concavities, or where you have convexities. And if I told you I could remember could remember all those rules for how that's done, I would be lying. I couldn't even tell you when I was doing it. You had to do the research and you needed a surveyor to go out and tell you what the angles were. But the, the court's opinions in Maine are full of those kinds of decisions with respect to a wide variety of those things. And I think you don't need to deal with them in your ordinance. If there's a conflict, you let the, the two riparian opponents make their case to Charlie. And Charlie might have to go ask his lawyer which one is right. But it's, it is an arcane area of Maine maritime law determining the location of riparian along all the various configurations of our coast. I know, I'm sure that doesn't help the guy who asked the question, but that's the answer.
No, that actually does help. Thank you. Yeah, that's all, that's all I wanted to ask about.
If I could add, what I was just saying, if you read the statute, basically it's talking about an aggrieved party, the aggrieved party being the owner of that property with 100-foot frontage. And he's aggrieved because he wants to put a mooring in front of his property. It's not a mechanism to get rid of moorings from in front of your property. But if you want to have a mooring in front of your property and there's one in the way, you can say, I'm an aggrieved party to Charlie. Charlie, help, I need to have you relocate this mooring so I can put mine in front of my property. The other guy's mooring could go right behind it, still in front of the guy's property, but further out. But that's the intention of the statute at the state level. If that helps.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
Charlie, have you had many issues with this?
There's, every year there's, there's that question.
Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
Todd Yankee with the Coastal Waters Commission. And Mark is quite right in that we have spent, and so Steve, we've spent a lot of time deliberating this. But that doesn't mean because of our hard work, it should go through. We have taken a lot of comment on this. We, as a group, our consensus has shifted over time because of the input that we've received. I think that this is a very reasonable, very reasonable changes to the ordinance. The, going back to the fees, I'm not a property owner because I can't afford it. Okay? My taxes represent that I'm not a property owner on the shoreline. I mean, I am a property owner. I'm not a shoreline property owner. Thank you. My, my taxes represent that I am not, I don't have valuable property on the shoreline. Those shoreline property owners, I'm not aware of any additional services that they get that I don't get, including moorings, access to moorings. Okay? I'm not sure that I, I completely understand that if you're a shoreline property owner, that you have inherent rights to a mooring that other people don't have. I also, too, and this is something that we've talked about, you know, quite a bit, is this is purely a user fee. If you don't have a mooring, you don't pay it. Most people in town don't have moorings. Why would they be asked to pay for a mooring fee if they, or for the same services that, that go along with that, or their rights to have a mooring? I, I don't quite understand that. And, and I think one thing that would be helpful, and we haven't heard, is from the thousands of people in town who don't have moorings, why are they being asked, you know, why are we even having this conversation about whether it should be a, a user fee or not? In terms of user fees?
Councilors are hearing from them.
I'm sorry?
Councilors are hearing from, from those other people that are not waterfront or shorefront.
Great, great. That's, that's good to hear. In terms of the grandfather of the fee itself, I think we, we heard that as well. When the landfill went to a per, you know, a fee to toss garbage, you know, a dump fee, were people grandfathered for that? I don't think they were. I think it probably, everybody paid the same fee when it went into effect. So I think this is pretty fair and reasonable. And again, we didn't all agree on how it came out. I mean, we do agree how it came out, but we went through a lot of gyrations and people, you know, took different places, took different positions. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Todd. Please step up.
Hi, I'm Joan Campbell in the lower Flying Point area. It's nice to see Eric, my new representative. And thank you to Ed. Did Ed just leave us? So I think the registration is a good idea. So that's no problem at all. I do have a few questions about the language, one of which Joyce brought up on Article Four, Number Three, where it says, the harbor master shall approve and control the placement of all moorings. And I think, I think for the people, I live outside of the harbor. And I think if we're outside of the harbor, does that mean we would have to come to you for you to tell us if we can have one and where to put it? So I, I don't agree with that. So I just, that's language I would like to see addressed. And similarly, under Article Five, Number One, there shall is, again, shall be granted, meaning that we have to ask permission for those of us that are outside of the harbor. So I think that language needs to be addressed. And then in One A, since my husband, Mark, and I, who is here right now, we are, have deeded rights away to the water. We're not on the water. And there you use the verb of "may." A resident with a deeded right of way to the water may be granted a mooring. So may, by whom? Is that by the harbor master? It is in our deed. So I, I just don't think we need to ask permission for those. So those are three kind of areas I would like to see addressed in the final version. And also regarding the fees, I really appreciate everything that everybody said about the fees, pro or con. I think Ed did a really good job on it. But I also had a note that we are paying much higher taxes to have a right of way to the water than people in the other districts are paying. So I, I'm, I don't see a reason to have a fee for the same reasons that everybody has already said. So I don't, I don't want to repeat it. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Just a comment. What I'm hearing now is I'm hearing pretty much everyone in the room, almost everyone, thinks we ought to have a registration and there ought to be some sort of fee for the registration. I'm talking registration fee. And we've heard like 650 for, for that. I'm thinking, you know, it's 10 bucks. But there seems to be a common place that we need to have a registration process and some sort of registration fee that's, that's probably reasonable. Because that would really help you a lot, Charlie. And I think that's what the Coastal Waters Commissioners want, correct? That's, that's the major push at one point. And to me, that's not unreasonable. So, you know, I, I think we ought to be able to, you know, come up on, and solve that issue. I, I, the other arguments is the services in the harbor and outside the harbor and all that and whatever. I need to talk some more with people. I will be talking to some people to figure that out. But I, I still have got some question on that. But, you know, if we could come out and, and solve this registration issue, and is there any objections, either to Charlie or the Commissions, that it could be done anytime? You know, like?
Registration?
Sure. Or, or is it, or is it just helpful for you administratively?
Administratively, it's helpful to get it in, in the off-season.
Okay.
You know, in summertime, June, July, and August, it's kind of like, I want to spend some time on the computer and reviewing applications. So it's, and it's just consistent with when I review the other applications for inside the harbor. So for consistency's sake,
Fair enough, yeah.
It's that I would like to see, but if it's, the commission wants something.
Well, no, that's, well, we need to know when you have time to do it. You're really busy.
That's what works best for.
To help. Thank you.
Best time of year, Ayo.
One suggestion. This goes back to Falmouth, you raced years ago.
Can you step up to the mic so we can capture an audio? Sorry to be hounding that, but.
Just like you get a parking ticket or a warning, sometimes a visual is a really good thing for people. We were in Falmouth in the regatta there years ago. We threw a mooring ball out for our dinghy because we weren't going to drag that around the race. Big bright orange sticker about this big is on the mooring ball by the end of the day from the Falmouth Harbor Master. Really gets your attention. So if Charlie wants to make up a bunch of orange stickers for non-compliant moorings next year, I'd be happy to go put them on mooring balls. Because that's an easy way to notify somebody they've got a problem. Put a big orange sticker right under the mooring ball. They call the harbor master. And I think it'll get a lot better registration.
Oh, yeah, we have.
I'll help you. I'll go out there around there in a dinghy and slap them on.
Can I just ask a question about process? So where do we go from here? Does it go back to coastal water? And I'll ask it to you guys as well. Does it go back to coastal waters and then to ordinance or just direct to council? What do you think?
My perception is we, we have a few language cleanups and consistency between shall and may that we have to clarify, which I think we could do pretty easily. And then there would be a decision if the council wants to adopt the recommendations of the commission, or, or it's probably multiple ors there, but, or have another conversations specifically around the fee, since that seems to be generally where there's a lot of disagreement or divergence of, of consensus. Or, you know, or start over. I mean, so that, that's what I think is, is the next steps. But the commission, in recognition of an enormous amount of work, has presented this to us for adoption. So we can have that conversation about, are we going to put it on the agenda for an adoption and have a public hearing? Or do we want to address some of the issues that we're hearing about today before we adopt it?
I think Charlie said the commission hasn't seen the new version with the changes that you made. Is that right? And are they substantial enough that you'd want them to see?
Yeah, not on a regular scheduled meeting. They haven't. This was sent out, like I said, a few weeks before this meeting. And yeah, those, those changes were a couple definitions that were added. So formality, it needs to go back or whatever you guys decide.
When's the next meeting of the Coastal Waters Commission?
Thirteenth, 13th of December, I believe.
Okay. And would that be enough time? If you got direction out of this workshop for some of the cleanup stuff, not, not tackling the complexities of the fee, but just some of the cleanup and the edits that you talked about, is that enough time for you to then have a vote at that meeting to say, here's our final text?
Yeah, I don't think that's unreasonable.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Keep moving.
Do you have to tell the attorney for any of those changes? Or those just kind of like this?
It probably wouldn't be a bad idea once that is approved. Or I mean, or if it's approved.
Yeah, it could, I mean.
Whatever step that would be. But I would like to have her put her eyes on it.
That would be the 19th that we would be taking a look at it at the absolute earliest. But whether it's that or the first meeting in January, it could be subject to final, final review and approval by the town attorney, just so that we could be doing those things at the same time.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I guess I want to, personally, I just want to thank the commission for an enormous amount of work that's gone into this. And we're not taking these suggested changes capriciously here to say, well, you know, you guys put nine months in this and we've looked at it for an hour and we think it should be this, this, and this. So I, I want to, I want to really thank you for that effort and let you know that we're going to take it very seriously.
It's got one more thing that we've, my concern with the verbiage is we've changed the verbiage I don't know how many times. You know, someone will say, shall, here, and then someone else does like shall, you know, muster. So I, I don't know, before, I don't know what the process you want us to do before we finally approve something and send it to Amy. We've done this before and it's come back and somebody has different verbiage we want. And I don't want to waste the town's money to send the verbiage to her to look it over. So I don't care how we do it. I'll do whatever way you want to do it. But I mean, that's a consider issue we should take. So we have one, because we're never going to make everybody happy with the, with the verbiage. Never. And then finally, one thing that wasn't mentioned is that, and I, I wish I'd mentioned it earlier, is that going back to the, to folks down in the lower Flying Point Road, not get services. Charlie goes down there all the time. If they call Charlie for a kayak, he's down there, right? If they, if they have someone who's mooring in their way, Charlie's down there. So they are getting services, right? And, and that's one of the big things that we, we thought about is, is, you know, he is there. He is there regularly. And, and they should, they should have a, they should have a piece in, in supporting that financially. That was one of our big pieces. I'm sorry, that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Chip, did you have something you wanted to follow up with?
Yeah, I was going to say, the fee structure is separate from this. Right?
Well, it would be.
No, but I mean, we vote on that separately.
Yeah, that's true.
So we can talk about that differently than the ordinance. To your point about the kayaks, is that everybody that has a mooring has a kayak? Or is that anyone that lives on the?
No, I just used that as an example, that something happens down there, you know, Charlie is going to be called and Charlie's going to go down there, right? It's not like he can't, he can say, ever say, well, you don't, you don't, you're not a mooring holder down there. I'm not going to go down. It's not realistically going to happen, right? He's going to be down there.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the point.
Right.
Okay, so you have 10 people, property owners out there, and nine of them have kayaks and one has a mooring. And the other nine call. They're, they're not paying for that service except through their normal taxes.
Right.
So it's independent of the mooring thing, what?
Right.
Okay.
And then the other, what you brought up is the, is the, is the slippery slope with the fees, right? That's a huge, and that's why we decided 50 bucks across the board to make it easy for everybody. Because where, where do you start with that when you bring in people and, you know, and what, what I get, what I don't get, where I am, where I'm not, you know, that's can, just a word of warning for you, we'll tackle it, but it's not going to be easy if you want to start making it difficult.
Well, I think we should make it difficult. No, I'm kidding.
So, John, do you, do you?
Sorry, yeah, kind of the microphone's cut.
Only because I'm the secretary, so I'll probably deal with some of the legalese on it. So ultimately, we can, like Mike, Mark was saying, we can change that. But you ultimately can craft and change the ordinance and approve it. Kind of how you see fit, right? Isn't it something that we sort of work out? But if you want to take certain things out or?
Yeah, and I guess I.
I mean, I think we should tweak it for sure. But instead of going back and forth and back and forth, I think ultimately we'd like to get you something that's 95%. Hey, we like it.
Precisely.
And you guys put the bow on it to, to make, you know, after listening constituents, make you happy.
Yeah. And I was going to do that offline, that I, I don't want to play ping pong with it like, well, we want to see this change and give it back to you guys and you have to do it, then you send it back up here. I think the, the, you know, the cleanup, the consistency of the language, that's not a contentious thing. We just want to be consistent with that and have it line up and have it be, follow the same, same definitions through their, you know, changing or taking something out, like you're not allowed to do this or you can do that. We're not going to do that without input from you guys. So that's why I'm thinking that we can probably get a little bit of support from Town Hall to go over this before your meeting on the 13th. So that you have, you know, at least some feedback from today's workshop about where to start. Make your final, I mean, I'm assuming that you're pretty close. It's not going to take much to get to your final because you've worked on it so long. And then that would be something that would come to a council agenda.
And I'm just trying to get, so wouldn't we present this though as, because I'm talking, I'm hearing from, from, sorry, Counsel Lawrence. He's on my trivia team, it's supposed to be Chip. But anyway.
He still doesn't know my name.
But as far as saying there's two, two structures to it. So are we, is it, is it all one together? Or are the fees separate of the actual ordinance verbiage?
The approval of the fees is separate.
Right. And ultimately.
And that's every year we change it.
You can change those as well?
The thing I was going to say about the cleanup is it's more of the property, you know, the people that have the right on the water have a, have the right to have it. And they're saying to come to Charlie to say, can I have it, is not what they're looking for.
Right. And that's what you'll come up with some of that cleanup.
That's the cleanup. So.
Right. Cool. Cool.
And going down through, it looks like, you know, number three, where, I don't know, I think most of the council thinks we need to register as a registration format. So I, I think we ought to give some guidance to the committee to say, yeah, we're behind that. You know, then we look at mooring inspections. I don't, I think that's fine. I think we've done a great job on. I think we've done a great job on that. I think that the number of moorings, I haven't heard any issues with that. It's more of, you know, more of that fee issue. And I think if we come back around our registration fee at the next meeting and hone in on that, maybe that, I think we're getting close. That's my sense.
I agree. Yep. All right. Any other comments before we wrap up?
I often don't understand what just happened, and this is another instance of that. What is the workshop saying to the coastal waters, or what are they going to come back to you with?
The workshop was for the public to make comments on the proposed ordinance from the Coastal Waters Commission. And so we've now heard that. And there's a couple of slight amendments to make to the proposed ordinance, and then a pretty big juicy conversation on the fee structure that is a separate document from the ordinance.
Right, who is going to do the slight amendments and when will they come back to the council?
I don't have the exact timing on that, Chalmers, but I think we can get, with a number of us making notes here, we can highlight those areas, have somebody here at Town Hall maybe propose the consistency of that language, send that to the commission for them to vote on or approve or take a look at for their meeting on the 13th, at which time the final version from the commission would come to the council for a vote.
And then you also need to have a hearing for...
That's right, yeah, the usual process, right. Yeah.
Can I just ask a couple more questions?
I just want to ask a couple clarifying questions. One of them goes to the fee. Can you just say, because I know there was some conversation about this, Charlie, the database that you use, that's the $6, is that, is that, I'm assuming part of that, it's a software fee, but is that, do we pay that every year? Or is it a one-time entry? You pay $6 when you enter it, and then as long as you don't change it, that's what it is?
Annually.
You pay annually, it's part of the subscription for the service?
Annually, $6 a fee, $6 a mooring, yeah.
And just for my information, because we seem to have circled around this a little bit, and we talked about it, but I don't think it landed anywhere. This question of non-Riparian landowners, their residents of Freeport, desiring to have a mooring out in the Anchorage but outside the harbor, is there any guidance, either in this ordinance or anywhere else in existing practice, about where that would be? That would simply be, they would apply for it? And, I mean, you mentioned the right of way, but, you know, I could, I could drop a mooring in front of Ed's house and put my dinghy in at Winslow Park and go all the way around town if I wanted to.
Exactly.
But there's no limit right now, or in this ordinance, about additional moorings out there?
That's correct, and I did look at, you can imagine how many ordinances I did peel through when looking at some of these changes. And it is sort of out of the norm to say, you know, I'm not saying for right or for wrong, I just couldn't find it where an ordinance says, "Okay, if you live up on Hunter Road, you can have a mooring, you know, anywhere on the coastline." Typically, the folks, which is not always the case, but if folks live inland and they don't have Riparian rights, they'll get on the waitlist for inside the Anchorage. We do obviously have Riparian landowners that have moorings in the Anchorage as well. But it is, I don't want to say common practice, but it's not something that you find often in ordinances where that's allowed.
Yep. So I, so you're saying it's...
That was a big public comment on our meetings where, you know, folks that came in, they wanted to be able to have the opportunity to have a mooring if they had the access with a landowner where they could, whatever, park a car, store a dinghy, whatever the case may be. But you do get into some gray area when you go down that road where, like you said, what's stopping someone from throwing a few moorings out wherever and just throwing on a motor on the dinghy at Winslow Park or, you know, Cove Road or wherever?
So to clarify, that's, there's nothing that prohibits that now?
Correct.
Nor is that prohibited in the ordinance? That is unchanging? Somebody on Hunter Road could...
Yeah, and after, I think, I don't know who brought that up just about an hour ago, but that might be something that I look into, maybe adding, I'm not sure what I would add, but it might be, you know, written permission from a landowner or just briefly go into that, proof of access. And again, I don't have, because it's not something that's been laid out for me through another ordinance, so I'd kind of have to sit on that for a minute and think about that.
But is that true anywhere in the state? That same premise that if you could throw, you know, in Portland or in Falmouth?
Yeah, I mean, if you live in Falmouth...
As long as you don't put it in navigable, in the channel, you could drop it and I could come down from Freeport down into, no? Is that an ordinance that they have, or is that...
Well, that's when you go back to that, you may have a mooring if you're a Riparian landowner. If you're not, you don't have that luxury. You don't have that right. So it's not, it's not an additional right that ordinances lay out in other towns.
Okay, so it shouldn't, so I don't understand how you could drop a mooring off in front of Ed's unless you had Ed's permission and still drive around.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I think Charlie's saying it's between Ed and the other mooring.
I get it.
To work that out, because it's, he's not, he's not getting in the middle of that now, nor is it...
Right, so that could happen in Falmouth, too?
No, other ordinances, they, that's...
They say no.
They say it's specifically for the property owner.
And so this, I think I'm getting this, this is part of where there was some, in the previous iteration of this, there was a lot more conversation about it having to be the landowner. And I think some of that language is gone, which is why, this is why this is, okay.
Exactly.
That's helpful. Okay, I just wanted to reiterate, I think what I'm hearing is a lot of the same as what Counselor Fornier was saying, is that I think we're pretty close in terms of understanding the need for the registration. I just wanted to say, I think it's understandable why you need a particular database for registration that may be completely separate from what the public information might be. I also think we have heard some really great suggestions in terms of how mooring information could be made public in the same way that tax property data is made public. And I think there may be an opportunity to do both rather than having to choose one or the other.
Yeah, and I'll just add, that database that we do use, it's, all the towns in Casco Bay use it. We have had boats that have come into Freeport where I can search that boat name and it will tell me the town of where it came from, so I can contact that town. So it's not just some random, you know, it's utilized specifically for, you know, kind of harbor management and caters towards that, so, you know...
It's a whole database?
Yeah, it's used all up and down the East Coast, it's...
The other thing I just wanted to say, and I know you had said that you were hesitant to try to differentiate between zones, but I just want to acknowledge that we've heard some conversation particularly around areas of concern outside of Winslow Park. And it does seem like there are lots of reasons why, you know, there are not other places in Casco Bay that are like Winslow Park. So there, I think there is a case to be made about why that may be a special area of concern. But also acknowledging that right at the beginning of this ordinance, in terms of definition, we're already saying, we're already excluding a certain amount of Freeport waters because of bustins. So we're already drawing a big, carving a big hole out of Freeport waters because of that, and I understand that there's a lot of reasons for that. But I just want to say that I think we're already dividing Freeport waters because of that, and I think there is room to say that there's, there could be other zones.
Yeah, and that's something that is a little more difficult from my standpoint, just because if you were to, not, I hate to keep saying, you know, "Look at, look at this town, look at that town," but typically, it's, doesn't matter where you are in the town, it's, the process is the same for everyone, and you don't really separate it into six different zones and make it more complicated than it needs to be. If, you know, you have a mooring here, it's the same if you have a mooring on the opposite side of town. The process is the same, dates are the same, fees the same. So I think we've done a good job to kind of cater to, you know, public comment and make those different areas already in addition to what was already discussed, so...
Thanks very much, Charlie. All right, well, thank you all for coming. Thanks for those online for listening and participating. I just realized we actually have like six public hearings that we're scheduling for the 19th, our second meeting in Janu, in December, so we may not get this on the agenda in December, but we'll take, we'll take a look at it as soon as we can, so...
I'll send you one of the...
Thanks Coastal Water Commission, thank you all.
So Charlie, if I sent you any emails or any comments, are you going to...